We could have a moment of silence to keep our troops, law enforcement, all emergency personnel, our thoughts and prayers that they come home safe. And also for former mayor of Woodbridge, R.A., who passed away, who was an owner of the board of taxation. Thank you.
I'm glad to lead this assembly by the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice that this meeting pursuant to the Republic Meeting Act and may I say technical authority attend it and complies with it shall be entered into the minutes of the committee.
Hold call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Capel.
Here.
Freeholder Nara.
Here.
Freeholder Tamara.
Here.
Freeholder Valenti.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Here. With recognition.
Yes, first is recognizing Freeholder Director Ronald G. Rios as he receives the Page de Homadu Award. Congratulations for his outstanding citizenship. And next is recognizing the 50th anniversary of St. Helen's School Edison.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Deputy Director Tamara.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Capel.
Yes.
Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes.
Well, this evening we recognized Ronald, who absolutely deserves his recognition, from the Millses County College. And we presented to him on July, August 27th, at the college in the morning. And I'll read a little bit of the resolution that was prepared for him this evening. Whereas it has come to the attention of the Millses County Board of Chosen Freeholders that Ronald G. Rios is worthy of special recognition as he has been named the 2018 recipient of Page de Homadu Award of Recognition of Outstanding Citizenship. And whereas Ronald G. Rios, a resident of Borough Carteret, graduated from Woodbridge High School in 1970, he earned a Bachelor of Arts in Occupational Safety and Health from the National Labor College. He worked for Conrail for over thirty years. And whereas Ronald G. Rios has been an active political figure in the Millses County for over thirty years and currently serves as Director of the Millses County Board of Chosen Freeholders. Whereas prior to his service as Freeholder, Ronald G. Rios was a councilman in the Borough of Carteret for more than ten years and served the Borough of Carteret for Council President for five years. Whereas Ronald G. Rios has made significant impact in the county by dedicating his time to improving the quality of life of all people through effective, efficient, and dedicated government. Some of his accomplishments include fundraising for pancreatic cancer research through an annual walk. And I think he raised over a hundred thousand dollars. And today, as we all know, Rita Franklin died from pancreatic cancer. And I lost a good friend Monday, who I've known since the fourth grade, who died of pancreatic cancer, a former cop in Edison. And hopefully someday, your funding will have a cure for it. The Teen Safe Driving Initiative and the Millses County Vocational Technical Schools established the Veterans Service Initiative that proposed and completed a project of 9/11 monument for Carteret victims. It also spearheaded the establishment of the 2015 Millses County Arts and Trust Fund, which allocates $10 million each year to expand arts and cultural venues and programming to all 25 municipalities. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Chosen Freeholders by Millses County, Millses. That we now here now recognize and congratulate Ronald G. Rios as he receives this award. Congratulations, Ronald. One other thing I think that's worth mentioning is that in 2013, Michelle Obama challenged county governments and all governments in our country to end homelessness for veterans. And I'm happy that, you know, 2016, we did that here in Millses County because of his leadership and Blanquita's leadership and then Social Services and Jerry McKenzie and all the people that worked for us in the county that were able to do that and continue to help veterans who might need assistance to make sure that they stay in their homes. So that is really deserving of all the awards that you can receive.
Thank you. Well, this caught me by surprise, but I'm gonna just say a few words that, you know, I always say that we can't be successful in our personal lives or professional lives without a team. I'm blessed with the greatest family, my wife and two children, and two grandchildren. And the reason I'm successful in my family life is because of my partner, my teammate, my wife. And it's the same thing in government. I can't do all these things without a team. And this is the team here. There's times that we introduce policy and change and programs, but it's also the other part of the team, and that's the staff and the administration of county government and all the employees that execute that policy or that program. So I just wanna say thank you for the recognition from the Freeholders and everyone else. And again, this is on behalf of all the Freeholders because without your help and support, I couldn't do it. Thank you. Okay. I'll leave my colleague, Chairman of the Education Committee, to come and join here. Tonight, we have a very special part of the program. And that's to award through NJAC, New Jersey Association for Counties, scholarships. And that's in partnership with Public Service and Investors Bank. And this year, we have three honorees that will receive scholarships. And the first one is... Where is it? Here. Okay, hold on a second. Nea, I hope I pronounced it right, Nea Drinkard. And Nea is a member, a student at the vocational, East Brunswick, was a student at East Brunswick Vocational High School. And she's been very active in school and in her community. She's an excellent student, and she has a strong interest in engineering and architecture. She's excelled in both individual and group projects and has demonstrated proficiency in all the CAD software she's used. In addition, Nea obtained a bronze medal in 2017 and a gold medal in 2018 at Skills USA Competitions for Architectural Drafting. So I'm so proud to say that you are a resident of Millses County and you make us very proud. Congratulations to you. See, it always takes a lady to straighten herself. And the check is here, too. That's the important part, right? The next we have, and I hope I pronounce this right, Gellie or Gelde? Gellie Dunias?
Gellie Dunias.
Gellie, come on up, Gellie. Gellie is another student at the Millses County Vocational Technical Schools. She attends, she was an outstanding student at the Woodbridge Academy for Allied Health and Biomedical Science. She's always been counted on to lend a hand, participate fully in classroom and speak only in truthful and kind words, something that we need more often in today's day and age. She has accepted a full load of honors and college classes throughout her academic career, and she's developed a passion for social justice. During her senior year, Gellie embarked on a capstone research project testing influence of music on children's resting and active heart rates. That's amazing. And she's gone more than 50 hours with a mentor during this process and presented her findings to a team of industry professionals. She's earned an impressive 4.8 weighted GPA during her four years at the academy. That is commendable. We are so proud of you. We are so happy that you are or was a student at our academy. We wish you nothing but success. Congratulations. And then last, I think I'll get this name right, we have Sean Mejorda. Am I right there?
Yes.
Close? Come on up, Sean. And Sean also attends our vocational schools. And he is a most conscientious and motivated young man. And he has been such a great student, a dedicated student, a strong interest in engineering. And some of his accomplishments include a bronze medal in 2017 and 2018 at Skills USA Competitions for Technical Drafting. He's, him and his classmates obtained first place in a collaborative effort with the Performing Heart Dance Program in this year's Millses County Vocational Technical Schools Career and Text Expo. He has been a super student, and he really is dedicated to what he wants to do. He's a great partner in his community. He's done great things, and I'm sure he's gonna have a great college career and moving, and even after that. So Sean, congratulations. I'm very proud of all these students. We have, I'm sorry, we have Lauren Wiseman here from NJAC. Is she here? I'm sorry, come on up. And we also have Diane below from the Millses County Vocational School. She is the superintendent. We have Franklin Case, a public affairs manager from Public Service Select You Can Guess. And we have, we don't have anyone here from Investors Bank. So if you all would like to say a few words, please feel free.
On behalf of my executive director and NJAC Foundation Board of Directors, we would just like to thank our partnership with PSENG and Investors Bank in providing us this wonderful opportunity to grant these scholarships to these terrific kids that are the recipients this evening. We wish you the best of luck and most success in your future endeavors. Congratulations.
On behalf of the County Vocational School, I would like to congratulate the three graduates of our district who are here tonight and their family as well. It takes a village to make such wonderful students and such young people that are gonna go out into our county and our region. And the future's in good hands. So thank you for all that you've done so far, and I wish all the best in the future.
I just wanna take notice for everyone to notice, these kids are gonna go places. They're gonna make Millses County proud. Their families are proud. Their families, I can see they have grins from ear to ear, and you have every reason to be proud. Good luck to you all. Congratulations. Okay, we have correspondence.
Yes, each Freeholder will provide the list of correspondence received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file as long as the clerk's board corrects.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Motion.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Capel. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Minutes for approval?
Freeholders' meetings are due by 19th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Deputy Director Tamara. Hold call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Capel.
Yes.
Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Reports of Freeholders, Freeholder Ken Armwood.
Thank you, Freeholder Armwood. From the Business Development and Education Department, Rutgers Cooperative Extension, Millses. You're invited to Rutgers Cooperation Extension Garden Field Day and Folk Fest on Saturday, August 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This is a day of free family fun with garden tours, live music, and food trucks. For each EcoVenture Youth Summer Program, August 27th to August 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., focusing on conservation, the environment, and ecology. Registration required. These events will be held at the Earth Center in Davidson's Mill Pond Park, 42 Riva Avenue, South Broadway. For more information, call 732-398-5268. From the Office of Arts and History, all new 2019 Arts and History Grant Guidelines for General Operating Support, Program Support 1 and 2, and Historic Preservation and Capital Grants are available on the county website. Search Arts and History. Mandatory Grant Workshops begin August 13th and will be held again September 10th at 2:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. at the Indian Queen Tavern, East Jersey Old Town Village, Piscataway, and Johnson Park. Over 60 groups attended the first workshop this week, and Arts and History organizations, declarations in ten are due no later than September 12th, 2018. Registration required, 732-745-4489. Join us for the first of a series of free historical music events on Sunday, August 26th, at 4:00 p.m., which will be held on the lawn at East Jersey Old Town Village and Piscataway and Johnson Park for Jazz of the 20s and 40s presented by the Hot Club of Flatbush. On Sunday, September 9th, at 4:00 p.m., a tribute concert to the early rock and roll singers from 1954 to 1964 will be presented by Gentleman Jim's Rock and Roll Roots Show. The last home game of our Liberty Baseball League will be held on Saturday, August 25th, at 12:00 p.m. at Liberty Field in East Jersey Old Town Village, Piscataway, and Johnson Park. Text culture to 56512 for more details. Lastly, from the Office of Workforce Development, the Millses County Office of Workforce Development continues to host numerous employer recruitments in each month. This month, our business engagement team is recruiting candidates for FedEx, U.S. Pharma Lab, Greenway Products, and H.M.S. Hosts. The Office of Workforce Development is planning its Fall Job Fair, which will be held on Thursday, November 1st, 2018, at the Woodbridge Community Center. Businesses interested in participating can call 732-745-3970. As all these county residents are encouraged to text "workforce" to 56512 for everything jobs. And Freeholder Director, I just wanted to congratulate you again on your award. But as I was a Spanish speaker in high school, my colleague Freeholder Nara pointed out that it's pronounced "La Longue De..." Award. And that butchered French, shall include my word.
Thank you. Freeholder Leslie Cup.
Thank you, Your Honor. On September 15th, the County Improvement Authority will be issuing $9.2 million in bonds to finance our annual lease purchase equipment program. That also means the county, the largest participant in this program, will be guaranteed the bond sale. This proposed bond sale triggered a rating evaluation to rate the county's fiscal stability and institutional framework. I'm happy and delighted to report that on Tuesday of this week, Dan Riverport's Global Rating once again affirmed to Millses County a AAA bond rating, the highest rating attainable. These facts are reflected in the SFP's report, which specifically cited the county's very strong economy, its strong management of good financial policies and practices, and strong budgetary performance and flexibility. With this affirmation, the county will have maintained a AAA bond rating for an unprecedented 17-year in a row. It's estimated that during this 17-year period, the rating has saved taxpayers more than $35 million. These savings are realized by borrowing funds at lower interest rates. And since this lease purchase program is open to all county municipalities, savings are also realized by those municipalities that join the program. Back to Ms. Parker.
Thank you, Freeholder Cup.
Thank you, Director. From the Sheriff's Office, last month, the first ever Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program was conducted at the Sheriff's Academy, and 60 Millses County recruits graduated from the program. The program itself received rave reviews from the attendees for the informative and educational training. So congratulations to all those recruits, and kudos to Sheriff Scott and her staff for conducting this very important summer program. From our divisions of Environmental and Recycling Division, on Friday, August 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, there will be another paper shred event at the Highland Park Senior Center Parking Lot, located at 220 South 6th Avenue. Residents free of charge are allowed to bring documents to be shredded, and this will, of course, protect your personal information. The very next day, on August 25th, Perth Amboy Public Works will host another paper shred. They are located at 599 Fayette Street. This is again from 9:00 a.m. to noon. So, and remember that these paper shred events are certainly not just for dead people in particular towns. So if you're a resident of Millses County and any of the other towns, feel free to drive to, drive north, drive south, drive to your neighboring town that's hosting a paper shred, and bring all your documents. If anyone has any questions or needs any additional information, please call our divisions at 732-745-4170 or visit the county's website. From the Office of Health Services, the Office's Center for Empowerment has implicated a new therapeutic program for its clients, the Empowerment Garden, which is a combination of flowers and vegetables that are planted and cared for by members of the center. One of the center's clients wrote, "I have never been a gardener, and joining the group was a big step out of my comfort zone for many reasons. In the few short weeks the group has been meeting, I have found a new interest and a group of people who are helping me to heal, something I've been needing to do for 40-plus years." This quote, along with so many others, demonstrates the county's commitment to caring for and providing services for victims of sexual assault. Thanks to all our staff for their continued compassion and support for all of the center's clients. For the Office TV Control Center, or from the Office's TV Control Center, recently, the center hosted two visitors from Santa Fe's Global TV Program. As part of the Global TV Division, the site visit was conducted with representatives from Paris, France. We were delighted to show them how an American TV center operates and provided them with information and education on our operations, DOT protocols, medical management, the population we serve, and a very nice tour of our center. From the thank you letter that was received, they were duly impressed with our center's staff, operations, and protocols, and rightly so. And the last thing I'll mention is, is I'm pinching a little bit on Freeholder Kenny's purview, but on August 4th, I had the opportunity to attend a commemoration. It was the 300th anniversary of Perth Amboy receiving its royal charter. And they had an event at Perth Amboy's proprietary house. And as someone who has been, was raised in the county, it was the first time I'd ever been there. And I'm upset that I never knew it existed and I'd never been there before. It's an amazing, amazing place that's preserved our colonial history. And I would encourage anyone here in the audience or anyone listening to stop by. And I understand that there are several days a week, if you go on their website, where they serve tea in the basement. And it's just an incredible place. And it really, really showcases the history, not only of Perth Amboy, but our entire county. So congratulations to Perth Amboy on their 300th birthday as a city. And that ends up my report, Director.
Thank you. If you have Deputy Director Charles, may I?
Thank you, Director. This past Saturday, August 11th, was our last show at the Plays in the Park. And it's the last of the 56th year season of the back of the Plays in the Park. I'm happy to announce that 2018 Plays in the Park Food Collection program was a great success. Over the course of three shows, 25 bins of food, which equals 1,250 pounds, were collected. And $4,000 was donated to the nonprofit Feeding Millses County. Summer is especially difficult and a time to feed those in need, so every donation makes a huge difference. My fellow Freeholders and I thank everyone who donated to these organizations. The organizations will be collecting food and asking for donations at the Freeholders Annual Free Labor Day Weekend Concert at Stephen J. Capstro Theater in Roseville Park. Please remember to bring a non-perishable food item with you, and the show is scheduled for Sunday, September 2nd, and it starts at 4:00 p.m. This is perfect timing since September is runner of action month, and the goal is to raise awareness on issues of hunger and get people to take action against hunger. If you cannot make it to the show, please consider hosting a food drive for the Foods or making a donation to Feeding Millses County to the Foods. The Foods can provide bin donations to store, and transport all food donations to the warehouse. Individual food donations can be dropped off in any of the public libraries in East Montrique, Edison, McTouchin, Miltown, Magrove, Perth Amboy, Piscataway, Plainsboro, South Amboy, and Woodbridge. Monetary donations also are accepted in the form of a check payable to Feeding Millses County. Mail it to P.O. Box 71, Edison, New Jersey, 08818. For more information about the Foods or how to conduct a food drive, please contact Jennifer Apostle at 609-409-5033, or email her at jennifer.pasle@mciauth.com. I also wanna mention that there's two longtime employees who have spent together over six decades working for Millses County, and mostly at Plays in the Park. And Gary Cohen, who has been our producing director for 29 years, has retired in this year. And he's done more for our Plays in the Park than can be spoken about. He's truly a legend, and he's done a great job. And, you know, in the shows, if you ever have, having an opportunity to go see our shows at Plays in the Park, you are missing Broadway-quality shows for $7. You can't even go to a movie for $7. Our veterans are free, and so is our service. Anyone in service are free. We have certain nights for veterans, but every night, if you were serving in our country, you can come any night you want to. And Jackie Neal, who's also been a huge part of Plays in the Park, would also be retired. So I wanna wish them both well in their retirement, happy retirement life. And I'm sure Gary will keep busy with the producing shows, and Jackie will be moving down to Georgia. So good luck to both of them. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Freeholder Blanquita Valenti.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. From the Department of Community Services, from our Office of Aging and Disabled Services, Millses County Annual Senior Health and Fitness Walk will be held on Wednesday, September 26th, at 10:00 a.m. at Roseville Park in Edison. In addition to taking a beautiful walk around the lake, residents aged 60 and over can participate in health screenings, learn about local programs and services, enjoy entertainment, and a box lunch. Advanced registration is required. Seniors are asked to contact our local senior center to sign up. I would also like to inform our residents that applications are being accepted for the residents of Roseville Park, the county's 84th, 84-unit affordable living building overlooking Roseville Park in Edison. Please visit residents@rosevillepark.com for information on the facility, eligibility requirements, and the pre-application process. Finally, in late spring, the county launched a Millses County Services Locator, an online resource directory to make it easier for residents and their families to access supportive services. County staff are available to provide presentations to community organizations on this dynamic tool. Please call the Department of Community Services at 732-745-4230 to schedule a presentation. And that's my report.
Thank you, Freeholder Valenti. I have a few comments to make. I just wanted to say that I attended... I just wanted to say that I attended Mama Mia at Play in the Park. It was absolutely fantastic. And as Freeholder Deputy Director Tamara, these Broadway plays, they're unbelievable. They are really, really Broadway-caliber performances, and between the singing, the dancing, the acting, and the orchestra, it is phenomenal. And I just want to say a thank you to Gary and Jackie for their years of service, because those plays would not be as successful if it wasn't for their participation, for their hard work and dedication. I attended, best Sunday, the India Day Parade in Edison that went from Edison into Woodbridge, and it was an unbelievable parade. So many people came out in support, celebration of the Indian culture, and so many things that the Indian-Americans have made to America, Middlesex County, and even the world. And it was really nicely attended. It was a little hot, but it was a great event. And on August 6th, we attended the opening ceremony for the Middlesex County Fair, and as usual, the fair was a phenomenal success. So many people attended it, and it's a great time to go and celebrate different things, from rides and all the farm-grown produce from our Middlesex County farms. It was really a beautiful event. And then on Tuesday, August 7th, I attended a meeting with some of our folks from county government, Les Jones, our health director, Alyssa Lewis, and Joe Crissa. And we had this meeting at the Health Department, and we met for an introduction, Dr. Sharif Al Nahal, who is the New Jersey Department of Health Commissioner, and he had some staff with him, and he wanted to get an update of where Middlesex County is on different health issues, whether it be Lyme and tick disease, and opioid misuse, and other overdose problems, blood screening, and different things. And by the end of the meeting, the Health Commission was very happy with the progress that we're making here and the different programs that we have at health. Okay. Ms. Athanasopoulos, do we have any resolutions to be added?
No, we're not.
Any resolutions to be amended?
No, we're not.
Resolutions to be held?
No, we're not.
Any resolutions to be voided?
No, we're not.
At this time, I open up the meeting to the public on any resolutions listed on... Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Indian members of the board, Charles Cradaville, I'm from New Brunswick, and I did it for New Brunswick today, and I'm candidate for mayor in this great city. I want to start by congratulating you on your award, and do have questions about a couple of resolutions. 1082 is some appraisal services having to do with the reconfiguration of the streets right near where we are now. Can you give me an update on the project and let me know what the point of this resolution is tonight?
There are some properties to be acquired. This is to do the appraisals. We're moving forward with the design to be had as quickly as we can. It's probably in the ninety percent, but we can't move until the property is secured.
Okay, and these would be the properties that are former Farren parking garage, the giant hole in the ground?
There's a couple small pieces of property, but part of Farren decades is included, yes.
Okay. And my understanding is the project actually creeps all the way up to Hamilton Streets? Or are there any properties in that vicinity that would need to be purchased, or is this just in the...
It's more in the eastern Albany-French intersection. The other ones were designed specifically to avoid.
Okay. And approximately when might the actual construction start?
I think it's going to be dependent on how fast we can obtain property. We can't go hard for property.
Right, right. It's my understanding that Farren Mall's owned by the New Brunswick Park, if that is right?
Yes, I believe so, really.
Okay. Can you tell us for the record what the other parcels are, who owns them?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll follow up. 1104 is another road project in New Brunswick. Can I find out what the update is on Livingston Avenue, complete streets from Elizabeth to New?
Again, we are waiting for the state to authorize us to move forward. We have to obtain and go through the procedures, because there are federal monies involved, and so we have to obtain those clearances, those documents, so I've been virtually completed. And we have to go... But it's just basically policy at this point to ensure eligibility of the funding.
Okay, I was not aware there's federal funds. What type of federal funds?
These are reassigned earmarks that expired and were reallocated. The county was able to obtain six million dollars of federal funding for this project.
Wow, okay, so waiting on the state government and the federal government is the answer?
Well, the state represents the federal, so the federal is usually not the problem. It's more like the state has to edit through the procedures, and it's actually in the state tip for 2019.
Okay, good to hear. And I just see this map that's being filed, it's for March 14th, 2017. Is there any reason for the delay in filing this property map, seventeen months later?
No, we just wanted to make sure that, as we got various clearances and organizations from all the agencies, we have to run a statistical study, that it did not impact a change that requires to acquire property, which is a disproportionate change.
Thank you. And the last item I want to ask you about is 1196, extending of a contract with Robert Wood Johnson Hospital. Can you tell me the nature of the contract? It's not clear from the agenda.
That's for Ryan White, if you tell me the nature. So that's specifically there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the public on any resolutions listed?
Yes.
Doctor Records? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Sure. Yes, I'll try to keep it less than that. My name is Bobby Rosenberg. I'm from 47 Welton Street, apartment 1A, here in New Brunswick. And the reason why I am here presenting, because I want everybody to know that the Elks is a national organization. Right where we have on New Street and Livingston Avenue, to be exact, 40 Livingston Avenue, is our Elks building. This original building was built in 1925.
Excuse me one moment, please.
Yes, sir.
Are you referring to any resolution that's listed?
Oh, no.
Okay, that's for the later part of the meeting.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oh, I'm not familiar with that. So excuse me.
Any comments for any resolutions that were listed?
Oh, I beg your pardon.
No problem. Anyone else in the public?
Close call, question?
Second.
Question to close by Fielder Deputy Director Tamara, second by Fielder Valenti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay.
I have a resolution to call, 18-1094.
1094?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Yes.
I have a resolution, 18-1194.
1194?
Fielder Director, I have the same resolution, 18-1194.
Fielder Narra?
I have 18-1163R and 18-1164R.
Director, a motion is now in order to adopt the agenda consisting of resolution numbers 18-179 through 18-1232, and resolutions 18-1094, resolution 18-1163, resolution 18-1164, and resolution 18-1194 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Fielder Valente, second by Deputy Director Tamara. Vote call.
Fielder Armwood?
Yes.
Fielder Koppel?
Yes.
Fielder Narra?
Yes.
Fielder Valenti?
Yes.
Fielder Director Ria?
Yes.
Now, a motion is in order to adopt the resolution number 18-1094.
Is there a motion?
So much.
There.
Motion by Fielder Armwood, second by Fielder Valenti. Vote call.
Fielder Armwood?
Yes.
Fielder Koppel?
Yes.
Fielder Narra?
Present and not voting.
Fielder Valenti?
Yes.
Fielder Director Ria?
Yes.
A motion is now in order to also adopt resolutions 18-1163 and 18-1164.
Motion.
There.
Motion by Fielder Deputy Director Tamara, second by Fielder Valenti. Vote call.
Fielder Armwood?
Yes.
Fielder Koppel?
Yes.
Fielder Narra?
Present and not voting.
Fielder Tamara?
Yes.
Fielder Valenti?
Yes.
Fielder Director Ria?
Yes.
And finally, Director, a motion is now in order to adopt resolution number 18-1194.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Director Tamara, second by Freeholder Narra. Vote call.
Fielder Armwood?
Present and not voting.
Fielder Koppel?
Yes.
Fielder Narra?
Yes.
Fielder Tamara?
Yes.
Fielder Valenti?
Present.
Fielder Director Ria?
Yes.
Okay. Now, this time I open up the meeting to the public on anything you would like to speak on. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Sure. For Freeholders, my name is Bobby Rosenberg. I am from here in New Brunswick, 47 Welton Street, apartment 1A. And what I'd like to do is bring... Well, I am a veteran, and...
Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you very much. And I saw last month, we honored a sergeant, I believe, or a sergeant first class, or a staff sergeant, and thank you very much for doing that. And also, thank you for the support that you give our veterans. And hence, the segue into what the Elks do. I can read you exactly what the Elks do, but as a veteran, I am very near and dear to my heart is what we do for our vets. It was mentioned here briefly what we do with our homeless vets. But as our veterans are coming back from either peacetime, well, wartime, here in the United States or overseas, we do... The Elks here, where I mentioned before, 40 Livingston Avenue, the corner of New Street, it's been in existence since... This building, this residence, has been here since 1925. We are here in the community, we support the community, and we just want to make everyone aware of the fact of what the Elks actually do. We also support disenfranchised folks in our community, also special needs children. It's near and dear to our heart. There are other various Elks organizations also in Middlesex County. At the top of my head, the Elks, I think some of the Elks in Edison, also Carteret, and there are several others, I think our honorable Freeholder mentioned, Perth Amboy, South Amboy has a lodge. So anyway, I want to make it very brief, but the Elks are here, and I just want to keep you all abreast that we do have fundraising and charitable events that go on in our lodge while there is some construction. Kudos to our Freeholders, to Fielder Director, for having this large construction going on in our municipalities, that they do come to our lodge, and thank you. Thank you very much for being a big presence. Also, on a personal note, thanks to our county clerk, Elaine Flynn. When I was being processed, she gave me a... There is a special ID card that one can get in this county, not all counties, in the 21 counties, except in Middlesex. And thank you very much for having that instituted, because when I went to the VA in East Orange, it was a breeze. Thank you very much. And again, my name is Bobby Rosenberg, I live on Welton Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick. If I may, I'd just like to hear from Freeholder Tamara about why he abstained on resolution 1094.
First of all, you go through the chair, that's me.
Yes, through the chair. For Deputy Director, can you please ask Mr. Tamara why he abstained on 1094?
Because the county was up from the company I work for.
Thank you. Through the chair for Freeholder Narra, why did she abstain on 63 and 64?
I'm now on Board of Church Family Services, Charles.
Wonderful, congratulations. And then, through the chair for Freeholders Valenti and Armwood, I believe, 1194, why they abstained?
As before, I'm still on the board of directors for reporting to the National Board.
Okay, same.
Same.
Thank you kindly. I did want to echo your comments. Mr. Freeholder Director, the county fair was awesome, and it's one of those things, I guess I can relate to Freeholder Narra, having not been to the proprietary houses. This was my first time going to the county fair, having lived here for a long time. I'm kind of upset that it was the first time this year, because it was really cool. If I may ask about Mr. Kelso's absence tonight, I assume he's still the county council. Can you tell me why he's not here this evening?
He's on vacation.
I understand that County College is going through a transition to a new president, and that the prior president, Ms. LaPerla Morales, left kind of abruptly after thirteen years. She still had a couple of years left on her contract, and I wanted to ask Mr. Freeholder Director if you have any response to the allegations that you and your colleagues forced her out?
I'm not going to make any comments. She was not forced out. I'm not going to make any comments.
Okay. And then, I wanted to follow up. I heard about this deal with the Roosevelt Care Centers, some sort of partnership with Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas. The nature of the partnership's not clear, and I did email the Deputy Director about this, and still haven't been able to get a straight answer. Are the Roosevelt Care Centers going to be sold, or is this arrangement where they'll be leased or managed? What's the right word to describe this partnership that's in the works?
We are in negotiations right now for Roosevelt Care, for RWJ to manage the facilities for three years.
So it'd be a three-year contract, and the county would retain ownership of the facilities?
We don't know where we're going to go with that yet. We're going to see how things develop throughout those three years, and then we'll make a decision at that point where we're going to move forward.
Okay. If you could, could you tell me whose idea was this, how this came to be?
This agreement?
Yeah.
This was a joint, thought-out process, because we've discussed the future of Roosevelt Care collectively through the years, all the Freeholders, and wondering how we can improve the quality of service over there, and not taking anything away from the service that's there, that's been there. But if we can bring it to another level, it's not a bad idea. So that's how we toyed with the idea of having someone like the caliber of RWJ, who is a very strong presence in the state of New Jersey in healthcare, and we thought it would be an ideal fit for us to engage in an agreement with them for the long... Well, at least for the three years, let's see how it works out, and then we'll make a decision, as I stated, moving forward, what we want to do. Do we want to keep them managing it, or do we want to go back to us managing it? And we'll take it from there.
Okay.
You know, with their experience and their track record, we'll have to listen to them closely.
Okay, and so to that point, do you know, do they have any experience running long-term care centers?
I'm sorry?
Do they have to... Does RWJ Barnabas have experience running long-term care centers, or would this be their first such experience?
I think just their track record alone of how they manage hospitals, and I think they'll do a great job. And like I said, we'll have to see at the end of three years where we're going to move forward.
Okay. With all due respect, I'll tell you the same thing I told the board of the Improvement Authority. I think the county and the residents of these care centers would be best served by an open, public bidding process to select a partner instead of negotiating.
Thank you, Freeholder. Anyone else in the public? Is there a motion to close?
So much.
Second.
Motion by Fielder Deputy Director Tamara, second by Fielder Valenti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? There are motions to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Fielder Valente, second by Fielder Deputy Director Tamara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Meeting adjourned.